Hey, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our second virtual council meeting. Se go ani buju ngo wachia kwai kwai. This is Mayor of the City of Kingston. I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honor and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors who are entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. So with that, I will officially call this meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have quorum.
So with that, we'll next move to the approval of the addits. We have a motion of congratulations. We have a, an additional two items to report number thirty-seven. We have an amendment to a miscellaneous business item and amendment to bylaws. Can I have a mover for the addits, please? Moved by Counselor Chappell, seconded by Counselor Ossanic. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Yes, Counselor Bowman?
Hi, Ryan Bowman of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declaring my pecuniary interest in the matter of clause four subsection three, report thirty-seven. As an employee of Utilities Kingston, it may be perceived that I have a conflict with meeting agenda item four subsection three, budget amendment wastewater reserve fund insofar as it relates to Utilities Kingston. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other declarations of pecuniary interest, we will move on. We have no presentations this evening. We have no briefings. Are there any petitions to present? Okay, seeing none, we do have one motion of congratulations. Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Counselor Ossanic. The congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to Counselor Robert Kylie and his wife Meredith Martin on their recent wedding. Congratulations, Counselor Kylie. We wish you many, many happy memories in the years to come. Again, congratulations. All right, so with that, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, next, we will move on to deferred motions. We have a couple of motions from our previous meeting. The first motion is moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Bowman, that Counselor Blank be appointed to the Katerakwe Region Conservation Authority for the remainder of the term. So I'm wondering, is there a volunteer to join the Katerakwe Region Conservation Authority? Counselor, yes, Counselor Neal? Thank you. Thank you very much for volunteering. So with that, we will call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, number two, moved by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor Hutchison, that Counselor Blank be appointed to the Planning Committee for the remainder of the term. Do I have a volunteer for Planning Committee? Okay, so I do not see anyone putting my, putting their hand up for Planning Committee, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to put forward or propose an amendment. The amendment would be to delete the motion as is asking for another counselor to be appointed. Instead, to amend the bylaw that would reduce the number of members of Planning Committee to five for the rest of the term. I'm sure Derek's just gonna pop it up on the screen so everyone can see it. Okay, so as you see, it would, it would delete deferred motion number two and replace it with the following. So I'm looking for a mover and a seconder for this amendment, please. Moved by Counselor Chappell, seconded by Counselor Osterhoff. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Now, on the deferred motion as amended, we will call the vote then. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, we have no other deferred motions, so we will move on to reports. First up, we have report number thirty-seven from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor McLaren, seconded by Counselor Stroud, that report thirty-seven from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
Okay, so we have, we have six clauses to work through. Clause number one, OECDM cooperative purchasing, OECDM marketplace products and services. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Number two, municipal accommodation tax twenty nineteen update. Counselor McLaren?
I have some concerns about this. I just got an answer from Megan Naught about a few of my questions, but I still have a few left over. In the recovery program, it's talking about here. Government and health authorities declare the pandemic contained and timelines for establishing and lifting travel restrictions and social distancing are measured. This is apparently phase two. We were told in public health back in in January that we lost the opportunity to contain this back then and that it will become endemic all over the world. We're gonna be stuck with this for the rest of human history. And I'm concerned that what I've also heard from public health is that we're looking to about a year and a year and a half before a vaccine is developed and then maybe six months before it gets deployed. And until then, we are we're incredibly vulnerable. Whereas this report seems to suggest that we're looking at a three-month timetable to start ramping up again. So my first question has to do with if, in fact, the travel restrictions, the, the social distancing lasts for two years, how much is going to come back and how much will we have to pay in such an event? Which I believe happens to be quite likely.
CAO Hurdle?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. So I think a couple of points. One is that as, as counsel know, the situation changes and has been changing actually for the past couple of months. And, and I think the, the intent here is to work with a plan looking at a recovery later this year. The exact timing is not known. And I think that there are also differences in terms of opening, traveling within the province and the country versus opening the borders of the country. So there I think there are different steps that are gonna be looked at at different, at different points in time, and not everything will necessarily happen at the same time. I think as you, you've seen based on the information in the report and some of the information on social media as well, Tourism Kingston has been active in trying to issue some social media and also trying to get people interested in, in Kingston from home. So they will continue that work. What we are suggesting is that the maximum that would be utilized from the municipal accommodation tax, which was collected from people that did rent hotel rooms, so visitors, that the maximum that we would use this year would be up to seven hundred thousand, should there be a need. If there is no need, obviously, we wouldn't use those dollars. But what we wanna make sure is that we don't have to go back to our tax base and essentially have to increase taxes in order to help with a deficit that is created.
For the entire year? So if we were to continue beyond the three months, it would, uh, we would, they wouldn't be coming back to us for any more money?
CAO Hurdle?
Two and three, Mr. Mayor. So the, the maximum amount that we're setting is seven hundred thousand dollars for the entire year. My understanding is if this was to go on for much longer, I'm sure that at that point Tourism Kingston would continue to make changes to their operations. They already have started to make some changes and, and cut back on some services and reducing some of the, you know, staff hours or time spent on certain things. So they would definitely adjust and, and continue to make some changes should this last much longer.
I think somebody's muting me again and me time I hit unmute this time, it's okay. So if I can just, if I can just interject for one second, Counselor McLaren, I think just for everybody, let, let Derek unmute you and mute you. Because you're right, what's happening is that sometimes if you try to mute or unmute yourself, then you're both doing it at the same time. So just as a rule, if we can do that, that would be great. So Counselor McLaren, you have the floor.
Certainly. And I heard in your email that you responded to me that some of this will be used for rent and wages. Is that correct? Because the, the recommendation says only for marketing and product development.
CAO Hurdle?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So the, my comment in the email was in regards to costs that Tourism Kingston continues to incur even if they have reduced their operations. It does mean that the up to seven hundred thousand would be utilized for that. I was trying to reflect obviously some of the ongoing costs that they still have to pay for. Some of their staff time is allocated to marketing, so there could be some obviously staff time, especially around social media, that could definitely be allocated to the up to seven hundred. And that's assuming that they do require this funding. Like I, I said before, they are receiving a, already some funding from the city through tax base. But these funds in terms of the municipal accommodation tax have been above and beyond, and they've been coming from obviously visitors that are, that have been paying the hotel tax over the, the past couple of years.
And last question then. Will any of this marketing be vetted by Public Health? Because the way it reads right now, it strikes me that we are working at cross purposes with Public Health, if we're trying to attract or make ourselves known to people who are not supposed to be coming here at this time. Now, I understand that tourism is important and we need to bring them here. But at this moment, it seems that marketing to people who should not be coming here would be working at cross purposes with Public Health. And I suspect that that's not a wise thing for us to do. Will that be happening at all?
CAO Hurdle?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I would say that Public Health, I'm sure, won't have time to vet all the marketing documentation or product that Tourism Kingston is going to prepare. As you've seen, they've been preparing videos and, and social media content. But I can tell you that Public the
Sorry, I should have been more clear. Not the, not the, not the actual product. Not, I should have been clear, not the actual product, but the market to whom it is being marketed to. So if Public Health and, say, Ontario was saying, we're closing the borders or we're keeping competitors out, are we gonna be marketing at the same time to competitors? Or internationally, if, if international borders remain closed for the foreseeable future, will you be checking with Public Health that this is not working against their messaging?
CAO Hurdle?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So absolutely, you know, and I'm working as well with Tourism Kingston, and I also am in regular contact with Public Health. So we would want to make sure that whatever marketing does go out is going to groups of people that can actually visit Kingston when we do issue the, the marketing information.
Thank you. So that makes it a lot better than what I first initially thought. I really do hope that we're never working at cross purposes with them and that that's checked because it really sounded like we were. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list is Counselor Hill.
Counselor Hill, can you just hit the unmute button?
Okay, can you hear me now? All right. So just, I, I, my understanding as well is that we won't be spending the read, the, the, the money that we are, at least sorry, setting aside as a buffer, the money that we thought we might have to with respect to the revenues we hoped to generate from the prison. So I, I, I sort of disagree a little bit with what Counselor McLaren said, because I think right now, as, you know, with everything that's going on, we really do wanna plant the seeds for tourism, particularly in this eastern Ontario region. You know, Toronto, Ottawa, Quebec, to make sure that they haven't forgotten about us in the intervening period. I think that's gonna be really critical. I saw the video that PC Tourism did and put out today to kind of keep Kingston at front of mind for lots of folks. I mean, I think people generally recognize that there's not a an opportunity really now to travel and, and to respect that. And certainly, we're not gonna encourage people to come at a time when it's not appropriate to, but we certainly wanna be first off the, off the heap, I think, once, once these restrictions are lifted and there is support generally among public health officials for people to travel to Kingston. So I, you know, right now, I think is a critical time for us to be investing in making sure that people haven't forgotten about us, that we're front of mind for lots of folks in the area, and so they really support this as an initiative. I don't think at the end of the day, it's gonna cost us seven hundred thousand, anywhere near that, to be truthful. But it's good to make sure that we have in, in reserve any resources that we need to make sure that Kingston Tourism and our small businesses are supported at the end of this. So I support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Chappell.
Thank you, your worship, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to this. My concern with this motion is that seven hundred thousand dollars is geared for the municipal accommodation development fund. And to me, this doesn't owe well to future transition of finances between the two separate parts. We have an issue with the amount of revenues that are coming in. I do think we should have an opportunity to hear from our members on the Tourism Board to find out if there is a shortfall from the recent curling bond spiel that we had. I'd like to find out where this money's being allocated. Because I'm quite concerned that this sets a dangerous precedent to be able to reach into one key for the other. And that is concerning to me.
Okay. Thank you. Next is Counselor Shrub. Go ahead, Counselor Shrub. Yeah?
Yeah, so it's a tough one because we are still in a very uncertain time. We don't know the timeline. Whether, whether it's Public Health, as Counselor McLaren mentioned, or the obvious wanting to get back to it or attracting tourism dollars as we're, as we're probably hearing from the proponents over at Tourism Kingston. So Chappell and I sat on that board the last year, and I have to agree with what he just said. The, it, there's, there's, there's a few moving parts. There's the period edition with the changes in the way that the money gets collected, the way that it gets distributed. It was already under, in, in flux before this epidemic hit. So it's very surprising to me to hear a recommendation like this basically in the middle of an uncertain time based on an assumption that there's no way it can be verified. The assumption that, that tourism will be as before. We're hearing from everywhere over the world that things will not be as before. I mean, it doesn't look like it's gonna go the way it went in Italy here in Canada. Thank, thank God at the moment. But if an Italian tourism agency was asking to spend money on marketing at this point in time, it would raise a lot of eyebrows. And I really think that it's not so much that the idea is poor, it's the timing of the, of the request that's poor. And, and I can't support it at this time, but, but perhaps in the future, when we have a more certain idea of where we're headed and where the tourism dollars might be coming from, that might be a better time to approve this kind of transfer of funds. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Who is the deputy mayor in the month of, oh, Counselor Neal? Counselor Neal, could you, could you take the chair, please?
Yes. Yes, I can.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So I appreciate the, the comments around the, around the table so far on this. I think when I read this recommendation, the key piece is not, not really the ongoing funding of marketing and promotional activities. The key piece is the transfer of funds from this reserve fund back into Tourism Kingston to be able to use for operational decisions. So just to be clear, the money that is in the municipal accommodation tax development fund, those are dollars that have come from the MAT in the past. And the reason why this recommendation is in front of us is so to deal with a shortfall in the MAT dollars this year, rather than using property tax dollars to fill that gap, we're gonna use MAT dollars to fill that gap. And I think that's the critical fundamental piece that is before us. How those dollars are going to be used, that will be a decision of the Tourism Kingston Board, of which I am a member. Counselor Kylie, Counselor Hill are members. I'm, I don't think that I'm out of line to say, if I was to speak on behalf of their, their both of those members, that we're not going to approve of, of, of wild, crazy decisions that aren't aligning with the realities on the ground and the, the realities that we're facing. That being said, there's, there's a lot of planning that's trying to be done so that when things do change, we're not caught flat-footed. So I think that that's basically the, the thinking there. But, but to be clear, the, the decision before us is really to approve the transfer funds from a development fund with MAT dollars to operations for current years. So I think for that reason, that would be the key thing for us to focus on, and I would ask counsel to support it. If I, if I could have the chair back, Counselor Neal, or Deputy Mayor, that would be great.
Yes, and I'll return the chair, and I believe I saw Counselor Ossanic waving.
Fantastic. That's great. Thank you. Counselor Ossanic, you have the floor.
Thank you, your worship. The part of the Tourism Recovery Plan I can really support is advertising right to us as Kingston residents, you know, our local markets. So they have the retail and restaurant to-go campaign. And from what I could see on the Tourism Kingston website, you, you go to the COVID landing page, and then they list all the businesses right now that are still open with online services or delivery service and also our restaurants. And I think that's something really positive that Tourism Kingston is doing right now, and hopefully we can help promote that so that everybody knows one-stop shopping, where to go to find locally, where they can still shop and eat. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Counselor Hutchison?
Okay, so one thought that comes to mind in this regard, and I appreciate all the comments, but one thing is that I'm presuming, and maybe it needs to be ascertained, that it takes resources and time to prepare for when you have the opportunity. Whether you release the marketing or not is a crucial decision, but it seems to me clearly you wouldn't do it right, right now, unless it's the type of advertising that was already referenced, which is, we're here, we're ready, right? So it's a bit more tricky than the usual advertising, but production and promotional and marketing plans all have to be in place if you're gonna be effective. So I'm presuming that's the case. I'll, I'll vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Holland?
Thank you, your worship. And yeah, my comments are similar to Counselor Ossanic's and Hutchison's. I, I think it's what the work looks like in the future, we don't know. But I mean, in the near term, it's certainly important to continue to have Tourism Kingston operate doing what they do really well, which is to continually provide information to the public, including those of us who live here and try to bring us together. And, and, and there's a lot of work that can be done in the near term. And also just to the point about potential for, well, supporting operations, supporting staff, supporting whatever online activities might happen. If we continue to ensure that people are receiving, that are employed and receiving and doing the good work that we've asked them to do, then I think it's an important recommendation for us to, to to be in support of. So I will be voting favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Through you, a lot of points in favor of this motion have already been made. I just wanna say that I agree with them. Particularly Counselor Hill's note around the regional tourism. Often when we think of tourism, we think of airports and people flying in from abroad. But in reality, the numbers here suggest that that's a very small portion of our tourism market. It's important, but it's not everything by any stretch. So if we have people when restrictions lessen, and the key point is that Public Health will obviously be the leading factor in the lessening of those restrictions, we can market to people closer to home, those who are here, like Counselor Ossanic said. And another point that hasn't been raised yet is tourism isn't just people coming for historical attractions or fresh water. It's things like the film office courting companies to come to do their productions here. It's making sure that businesses know that Kingston is a place of good economic opportunity. So tourism is more than just individuals or their families coming here, and we need to make sure that we have the assets ready, as Counselor Hutchison said. When the time comes, we can market that. So by all means, please support this motion.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Neal?
Yes. Yes. I just wanna say, I, along with Counselor Holland and Counselor McLaren, I also sit on the Public Health Board. And although there have been discussions regarding kind of worst-case scenario that talked about eighteen months to two years, I have to say there was nothing definitively stated by either our MOH or the other specialists there. They talked about how to mitigate it and what worst-case, better-case scenario might be. And therefore, for us to be making decisions to defund an organization because we're counting on it possibly being a eighteen-month to two, two-year situation that isn't a definitive thing at all. So I, I think this is prudent, particularly because it's, it's money that has been raised in large part by by the hotelers here in town. So we, we need to continue to support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Doherty.
Thank you, and through you. The economic impact of this is, is creating a lot of uncertainty, of course, and, and challenges and stress for our local businesses, the for the arts, for musicians, that we need to be out there supporting them. So I'll, I'll definitely be supporting this motion. So I'll, I'll definitely be supporting this motion. Uh, it's also about positive messaging, that there will be a post and time too, and that we'll be ready for that. So I'll, um, really add this forward and happy to support it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, seeing no other hands, then we will call the vote on clause two. All those in favor? Opposed? Yes, Council Chappelle, do you have a point of order?
No, it's opposed.
Oh, it's just, haha, just, just to make sure. So, uh, when I say opposed, raise your hand. If you do this, that means point of order, so. Okay, so that, yes, Counsel McLaren, point of order?
What are we supposed to do if, uh, an incorrect statement was made with regards to the science behind this?
There is, there is no.
We have a, we have a.
So Counsel McLaren?
Code of Conduct that says we're supposed to refrain from making statements known to be false.
Counsel McLaren, uh, you cannot use a point of order to dispute, uh, what somebody else has said. Uh, so with that, the, uh, vote carries by a vote of, I'm just counting, uh, eleven to two. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, it was ten, ten to three. Yes, Counsel Stroud, point of order?
Oh, I was just saying that the count was ten to three.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I'm, um, I'm getting used to, uh, counting manually again, so my apologies. Okay, so with that, we will go to clause three, uh, bylaws to provide for, uh, the provision and enforcement of orders under the municipal emergency declaration and an associated administrative penalty process. Okay, we will call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? I'm sorry, uh, Counsel Chappelle, did you wish to speak?
Yes, I didn't think we were going straight to a vote on this. I'd like to speak to this, uh, particular motion.
You have the floor.
I would like to understand the, the nature of the, this, this penalty fee, um, with regards to how it impacts residents, because it's not really clear. It's very, very sort of, uh, amoeba-like. You don't really understand what it is. And I understood from an article I read in Ottawa Citizen that there was an autistic child playing with their father in a field and was fined $750 recently. So I'm wondering if this is the type of thing that could happen here in Kingston.
So, um, who would like to, is that, yes, Commissioner Joyce?
Yes, the proposed bylaw, what it's going to address is any specific orders that we issue or that the mayor issues under our City of Kingston Emergency Declaration. It is not intended to deal with the provincial orders or anything on the federal level like the quarantine actions. Some of the, uh, other things that have been happening in the media, uh, that other municipalities are doing are, is a result of some of the bylaws that they have enacted specifically in their municipality in response to the COVID thing. Those things, I would say, are under our control.
So with respect to that, can you give me an example of the type of bylaw we might issue? And I'm wondering in particular, like if, if we see a grouping of five or more non-related adults, would that be something we would go after finding? Or like, I, I just am having trouble conceptualizing how this will be applicable in Kingston.
Commissioner Joyce?
Yes, so how that would work is, uh, the five or more that gathering is a provincial order. So currently, that's enforced through the police and also can be enforced through our provincial offenses officer, uh, as directed by order. And that would, they can issue a warning, they're doing a lot of education at this point, I know, and they can issue ticket and summons to court. Our order itself is an example, what some other municipalities have done, is they have, uh, instituted bylaws with respect to the two-meter distancing, for instance, the social distancing that's, uh, come out as a recommendation and has gotten a fair amount of attention. So if we wanted to issue an order, uh, stating that people cannot be within two meters of each other for more than an incidental time in our parks, for instance, or in our public spaces, then we could issue that order, and then that would be enforced through our mechanism using the penalty notice or with the ticket or with the summons. Or, uh, as often is going to be the case as we start, is would be just a warning.
Counsel Chappelle?
Yes, uh, so following up on that, uh, in this bylaw, I see a flaw that there's no sunset clause. We just heard that Tourism Kingston anticipates this will be over by the summer, and they'll be able to, uh, go back to some normalcy. But there's no state of emergency, uh, sunset clause on this. And second of all, if we are talking about enforcing the bylaw of five or more unrelated adult males, I would like to remind you that there are five residences in my district that have unrelated adult males in there on a daily basis that require some significant attention.
So, uh, so Counsel Chappelle, I'll let, uh, I'll let Commissioner Joyce address the first part. But the second piece, again, uh, as we heard, refers to the Provincial Offenses Act. So that's not the subject of, of what's, what's before us. Commissioner Joyce, uh, if you wish to respond to the first, first question?
So, uh, Counsel Chappelle, could you just repeat that first part, please?
Why, since we don't know the significance of this pandemic and when it will end, and there's been some positive, um, uh, suggestion that it may be over this, this summer or we hit the flatten the curve, uh, why is there no sunset clause in this extraordinary bylaw that allows a great deal of impact to the liberty of our citizens?
Sure, I can address that. So through you, your worship, our bylaw refers to a declaration of emergency, and it only comes into play when there is a declaration of emergency. So any orders that are issued under these bylaws are only current for this specific declaration of emergency. So any orders that are issued by the mayor under our declaration of emergency that we have right now would only be, uh, would only be relevant to this specific emergency. Once the emergency is terminated by the mayor or by council, which can happen at any point in time, unlike the province, which has to keep renewing, uh, 14 days, once it's, it's declared ended, all those orders are ended as well. But the bylaw stays in place so that if two years from now, there is another emergency declared, we can issue those order, any orders at that point in time.
I would like to remind council that on March 5th, we declared a climate emergency. Would this also fall into this type of legislation?
Commissioner Chris?
Through you, your worship, uh, no, it does not. The Declaration of Emergency has to be one declared under the Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act.
Thank you. I just had some, uh, questions from residents. I needed to clarify that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Counsel Hutchinson, I think I saw your hand next.
Okay, um, a couple of questions. Uh, the first thing is, I noticed under, um, under the bylaw, the minimum fine for an individual is $500. And under the, for corporations, it doesn't have a minimum. It is a first offense. I think it's $25,000. Um, clarified? Uh, it seems to me that both categories would have a minimum. And that doesn't seem afforded for. And Mr. Joyce? Or Mr. McLeod answer that?
Commissioner Joyce?
Yeah, I'm just, uh, looking at that. Is that, are, are you referring to the penalty notice? Or are you referring?
Might take a minute to find it. It's, uh.
Oh, this is Alan. I can just, uh, guide you to section 6.5 of the emergency order. There is a minimum fine for that vision-related corporation as well as a maximum there.
Oh, there is a, okay. Cause I, I just saw the, um, I'm trying to find it now. I thought it would be known. We didn't have it queued up. Just a sec.
It's at section 6.4 and 6.5. 6.4 provides for a minimum and a maximum fine for a corporation itself. And then 6.5 does the same for officers or directors of those corporations.
Okay. Okay, um, fair enough. The, um, it's just the way it's worded in the report. I just can't put my finger on where precisely it is. The, um, my other question is, it talks about, um, uh, under, um, bylaw 2020 or 69 for the Establishment of Process for Administrative Penalties, talks about appeals, uh, naming first of all, you get appealed to the screening officer and to the hearing, and then to the hearing off, hearings officer. So, um, Mr. McLeod, do you think, would there be any role for the appeals committee in this?
Mr. McLeod?
Yeah, sorry, I was probably pressing the button when I shouldn't have been. At this point, it's written that these offices are, um, any person designated from time to time to perform the function of a screening officer. So at this point, the concept was both the hearing officer and the screening officer would be individuals, but they are not designated as such yet. Like, no, no individual has been chosen.
Right, but sometimes the word person has different, you know, different definitions itself. So I just wondered that because at appeals, we do get some cases of appeals that people wouldn't expect us to hear. Um, finally, do you have a comment on these kind of laws? Like, we're talking about taking away the emergency, and we just heard, I think it was Counsel Chappelle, to, uh, the, like about when these laws would, um, lapse, when the emergency is over. So do you see any role for a sunset clause on this type of, um, bylaw or provisions?
Through you, your worship, uh, as Mr. Joyce or Counsel, uh, Commissioner Joyce said earlier, both the bylaws have a floating sunset clause in effect, because they both refer to the declaration of a miss, mid, of a municipal emergency as the circumstance that allows these measures to be taken. So there isn't a deadline in the sense of a calendar date. There is a deadline in terms of the circumstances. And as Commissioner Joyce said, counsel the mayor, and in fact, under the statute, also the premier can declare an emergency is terminated.
Right, so the map, the provinces in a different, as I understood, was the provinces in a different position. Has to renew it every couple of weeks, I think, uh, one counselor said. Is that correct?
Commissioner Chris?
Through you, your worship, yes, that is correct. Uh, they have to renew every 14 days. That's only for provincial declarations. That doesn't apply to the municipal declaration.
Right, so I raised this question because, um, as people raising questions around that, how long this will be, whether it should be renewable, and, um, these are all people that are assiduously safe distancing and ice self-isolating and all that. They're in support of what the municipal, municipality is doing at the moment. But the, the, the issue of when and if to raise it, which is quite a ways off, in my opinion, will, will, um, raise its head eventually. And so it's really around the question of, uh, what is a justifiable, justifiable limitation on civil rights? So I'm, I'm just raising the issue at this point.
If I could add through your worship, if you look at the emergency order bylaw, while the bylaw doesn't lapse, orders made by the mayor do. So the bylaw is the structure, and orders that are issued by the mayor fill in the substance. Those lapse at 28 days. So they would have to be renewed to be continued. But the structure provided by the bylaws will continue so that they're distant, as Commissioner Joyce said later, if we have a recurrence of an emergency at a later point. The mayor will issue orders to fill in substance, and they only last 28 days.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Joyce, is there anything else you would, you wanted to add there?
I just want to remind, uh, people that if the bylaws do not pass any order that we issue under any declaration of emergency, municipal declaration of emergency, is not enforceable. That's a bit of a flaw in the Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act. It gives the mayor the right to issue orders, but there is no, uh, provision for enforcement. So without these bylaws, anytime we declare an emergency, whether it's from a tornado or anything, we could issue orders, but we can't actually enforce them.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next, um, this is Counsel Doherty.
Thank you, and through you, I'm just wondering what kind of guidelines or in training will be offered for police officers or bylaw officers, uh, before they go out there? But we don't want any kind of officers eager to, to, uh, charge people and, uh, fine people. Um, and, and if that training will include, uh, warnings and educating the people who may not have known that, uh, that they should be out doing what, you know, some people are obviously ignoring the rules, but others will, it may be really innocent. Like, like those reports of, about a father and son in Ottawa, right? I mean, those kind of reports, we want to make sure that that definitely doesn't happen. So what are we going to do to make sure that we don't have them?
Commissioner Agnew?
Yeah, thank you, and through you, Mayor Patterson. Um, so our approach to enforcement as a community is one that is education-based and proactive-based, and we're not treating this si- situation any differently. Our municipal bylaw, uh, officers are working jointly with Kingston Police, and we're having weekly meetings with them as the information continues to roll out. We're meeting with our legal teams to talk about any necessary training or additional technical information that's required for officers to know how to issue the part one tickets, because it does involve specialized wording in those pieces. So all of that work has been a continuous work in pro, uh, in progress over the last couple of weeks as things have continued to unfold. But our first stance is always one of education and awareness building. So we're, we're working with our communications officers to put out information consistently to the public, clarifying what the expectations are and what the requirements are related to behavior, social distancing and all of those pieces, um, how to utilize our park spaces and how to do so consistently with the direction from public health. And only if we see that people are not taking the education, the warnings, the advice, then we would move to looking at more of a, uh, an enhanced approach towards enforcement, which could be issuing, uh, part ones, which are tickets, um, as it relates to the infractions that are laid out within the bylaws. But certainly, we're trying to work and educate people as a. As a first priority always and make sure that people understand what the expectations are and providing them with that support before moving to more active enforcement.
So that includes warnings.
Do you, Mayor Patterson, correct?
Thanks.
Through you, your worship, I've in my discussions with the police, I would also say that they have largely been providing education and warning. On dealing with the complaints and calls that they've been receiving up to this point. The tactic at this point really has been that if they have to go back and deal with the person a second time, then. They're going to be more inclined to give a ticket or a fine at that at that point. But. Right now, it's still very much stressed to be using education and providing warnings.
Okay, thank you. Next is councillor Senick.
Your worship through you, two questions to staff. One is about the timing of the set fines. If we pass this bylaw tonight, does that mean that if someone was, you know, really not following the provincial order? Our bylaw officers could start giving out the fines tomorrow? Or what day would the set fines come into effect?
Mr. Joyce.
So our intention is right now that the. The administrative monetary penalty would take effect immediately. For us to issue fines using the ticket mechanism. That requires the confirmation from or approval of the chief justice, which if the the bylaw gets passed. We will be moving to make that that application first thing tomorrow. And I believe and. Ms. Carol could be able to talk to this. We expect we would get a very quick response on that.
Thank you. And my other question then is just about which things are actually enforceable. So. We had some supplementary information sent to us, and if we didn't have that information sent to us, I wouldn't have known that a park bench. Is actually not allowed, like you're not allowed to sit on a park bench. And I don't know if other people would have known that, like if you're by yourself or with one other person. I would have thought that would be okay. So I just wondered, I'm in our parks. Where people could still walk through like Doug Flur, for example, I think there's some park benches there. And I just wonder. Um, do we have like the yellow tape over park benches? Or how can we help tell people that they can't actually sit on a park bench?
Sorry, Derek. Yeah. Uh, thank you, Mr. Merritt, through you. So we have definitely put out a lot of signage and caution tape. And in parks across the city, and we're trying to complement that work with messaging. Through various channels on what defines a park amenity versus the ability and the allowable. That people are able to walk through parks but can't touch or use the various amenities such as playgrounds, park benches and. The other recreational type uses like basketball courts and baseball fields. So it is a balance between logistics of getting all parks across the city signed, which has been done. But all parks have various different types of amenities in them. So we're we're trying to try to message that councillor. As well as with onsite signage, which we are also trying to keep tabs on to make sure it stays in place. Across about the two hundred, two hundred and fifty parks across the city. So we are continuing to try to drive the message home. Through through various channels. And we're happy to take any specific concerns of parks to try to. Focus on areas that may not be. Being understood or heated by the public. We have chosen some very specific larger parks for. Fencing and and also specific signage where we know there are more likely to be more more people to to want to to use.
Okay, thank you. We'll try to help spread the word too, because until this afternoon and we got the added information, I didn't know about park benches. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Holland.
Thank you, your worship, and thanks to staff. I know that behind the scenes, there's certainly. Lots of work that is and lots of effort in trying to keep these changes and provide the information to the public. And I think it's been. Done really well so far. I'm just curious about, I guess, even. Given just the jurisdictional. Situation where we are, we do have orders from the provincial government. We have provincial authorities involved and municipal as well. You know, municipal versus provincial declarations of emergencies. I think that part like that overarching part of. Is responsible for making these major policy decisions is something that we need to really. Continually centralized in some way. I mean, given given that we're trying, the public is looking for information, we're constantly trying to provide that information. And I know, you know, that being involved with public health and also with the city. Having access to that information is really is so important. It's so key. And, you know, most of us spend most of our time gathering the information so we can share it with people. And respond to those questions. But I guess it's just I'm I'm curious about, you know, given what will come of this. Where there will be a lot more concerns about just sort of individual actions in around our all of our resources in the city. Is there, do do staff have feel that, you know, do we have something that will be very kind of. User friendly centralized way? And I'm sure it's difficult, given all the different organizations involved here, but. It just just so that we can continue to have that accountability. And and direct members of the public to where they need to be. Finding answers to their questions, I guess. I'm just I'm just asking to ensure that, you know, every individual. Who has a question related to their actual physical activity in the city, let's say, or where they move. That that those people can get the information that they need and that we can all provide it as as easily as possible and in a very straightforward way.
Mr. Joyce.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor Patterson, we are working closely with our municipal partners, Public Health. We're on the phone with them multiple times through the week. We are. And having daily discussions with Kingston Police. So in terms of a lot of the questions, we're trying to line those things up. We're trying to align our messaging up between the three, those three entities in itself, because a lot of these. Questions are coming in around enforcement and what 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 can be enforced and what can't be enforced. And so we actually have something going out tomorrow on that. So we are actually working towards that. We understand there's a lot of confusion out there. We continue to update our COVID nineteen public webpage. As well in response to what we're hearing from from the public and others.
Great. So then I guess just a follow up then. So the online communication is 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 very useful and certainly helps us. As councillors, you know, get that information and send it. Provide it to whomever is is looking for it. But as far as signage or information for those who are not using. The social media or websites, is there something in place? Do we have a strategy involving media outlets or or other ways of communicating?
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Joyce.
So we are looking at alternative, certainly the press releases are one of the primary means that we're using to get information out to the public and we're. We continue to look at other avenues or vehicles that we can use to get the information to the public. And so we will continue. With that and try to strive to be better with it.
Thanks. That's great.
Okay, next on my list is councillor Kylie.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, through you. I was wondering about public education too, and the email that we were sent earlier today, it's been referenced a few times now. The flow chart, the simple graphics were very effective in helping me understand exactly what's permitted. So I was going to ask if that could be sent out through the city's email list or something very similar. To help people visualize how the process works around enforcement and then also the few bullet points around what's permitted. To councillor Sanic's point were very clear. So if we could share that or something very similar, I think it would be helpful.
Yes, through you, worship. Yes, and we do have something coming out tomorrow regarding what's enforceable and not enforceable, but we'll put some more. Similar to what I had on here onto the webpage. And yes, we can certainly put the schematic. That we have as well on our webpage.
Thank you. Councillor.
Thank you, worship, and through you. I'm just going to follow up some of these things of all and instead, but I think key on this is is going to be communication once this passes. There's right now, just from what I'm experiencing and from what I'm sure there's. It's a lot of misinformation out there. There's a lot of opinions of what should be enforced, what shouldn't be enforced. Neighbors seeing neighbors doing something, not not sure they're allowed to do it, not sure. If they should report it or even who to report it to. So I think the key thing here with the communication is that it's got to be, it's got to be wholesome. But at the same time, it's got to be as simplistic as possible in the sense that, you know, since in one of the things that Commissioner Joyce put out, it was just enforceable things and then a list of non. Which was key because that basic list, people are not going to dive super deep into this. They're going to kind of hopefully take a common sense approach, but. One of the things that somebody may look at, which I wasn't aware of, but a lot of walking paths over here. If you happen to stray off the walking path going for a walk and cross a soccer field, all of a sudden, somebody could go, oh, there gotcha. And then it all become, it can almost become vexed in a sense where it's like a person's crossing a soccer field. To get to another path, they're not crossing the soccer field to play soccer. So I think in this, it's it's going to be a tool that we're going to have, but at the same time. There's gonna have to be common sense applied. And if somebody, if an officer sees somebody crossing a field. And pulls out a soccer ball, that's a little bit different than somebody that just happens to be walking across the field. That's when the warning comes in. And it'll be an escalation thing. I know some people have some concerns here that it's going to be kind of bam, there's your seven hundred and fifty dollar fine right away. This is a learning thing. This is a new experience for all of us. So I would hope that throughout this, it it's an opportunity to educate the public. And really what these tools are for are for the for for those persons who just don't want to seem to to follow the rules in the grand scheme of things after repeated warnings. So that's really where a lot of people get frustrated is when right now we can give them repeated warnings, but there's there's no enforcement at the end of it. So if somebody's not going to follow the rules. They just won't follow the rules. There's there's no consequence. Once this is in place, there's actually a consequence. Another thing, and this is a question for, I believe, Commissioner Joyce would be. Once assuming this passes tonight and once this is in place. Some other municipalities and some other jurisdictions have actually posted once it's been used at some point, just to show people the seriousness of it. So obviously it would have to be. But would we be able to to know and to perhaps even tell the public that it had been used at some point? So, you know, the number of people that actually. I guess in a sense been finding under this, just so that people understand that, you know, if if you don't follow the rules, it's it is something that could possibly happen. In these situations for somebody that constantly breaches the rules. Is that a possibility?
Mr. Joyce.
Through you, worship. Yes, that is certainly a possibility, and it's some of that in the media, as long as we're blanking out all the confidential information, of course. We can certainly do a press release if needed to indicate that fines or that we have applied penalties to people. With this, and I would also echo your earlier comments that I the expectation with any order would be. Around education and warning as a as a first step.
Right. Okay, next is councillor Strope.
Okay, so we need to just back up. To a higher level to understand the context of this discussion that we're having, especially watching. So the province. In reaction to the pandemic. They cared. Measures that are province wide. Those are things we we as a council can't alter one way or the other. When the province issued. New prohibited behaviors that aren't clear. Nothing we can do. Confusion about those. You know, so we could, we could agree right here, all thirteen of us, that some of the provincial directives are confusing. What we can do is avoid adding to the confusion. By creating new measures. On top of the confusing ones coming to the province from the province. That confuse people even further. You know, councillor Chappelle used the example a while ago about. Unrelated males in this in a in a steeple dwelling. You know, that's not in a park, so it's a different set of rules. Is it forcible? Like, there's no clear answers on some of these things. And we know what's happening in our community. So. A little bit, a little bit much to know that you can't play, you can't go with your son to a soccer field, just the two of you, you're already living together, kick around two people. You stayed more than two meters apart. So I know that because. It's been said to me in various forms of communication, but the average citizen doesn't know that. And. The 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 level of complexity that's been introduced by all the reactions from various levels of government. It's just. Unfathomable what the average citizen is supposed to do with all this. So, you know. I understand what the commissioner is saying that without enforcement, without a bylaw. Any emergency measures that the mayor. Triggers by the declaration of emergency are not enforceable and therefore. Toothless and moot. But on the other hand, confusing. Having several levels of government giving confusing directives and different interpretations. And as councillor Bohm said. Citizens interpreting them in a variety of ways. Should you report it? To who you report it? What's allowed, what's not allowed? It it defies common sense at the current time. If you you just got someone from another country to come in here. That's possible, but if you did, what they say, it is, it's impossible to understand. Thing in its entirety and for what is the utility? Of extra enforcement options here at municipal level. What is the utility until the provincial level has been clarified? You know, why is it that they made a degree of parks? You can traverse parks, but you can't loiter in parks. You don't loiter in parks. Parks are not about loitering. Parks are enjoyed by residents. Not as transit, as the place that you go. You can't loiter in a park is contradictory to the sense of what what a park is. That's why it's confusing. You know. I can play soccer in my yard with myself, but I can't play in in an empty space in a park, even if there's no one within fifty meters. It it it's not helpful, in my opinion, to have extra levels of municipal enforcement when things are so confused. What we should be doing is, as several of you have said, is helping. things are so confused. What we should be doing is, as several of you have said, is helping with communication. Maybe we should be starting with that. It's all good for, you know, the commissioner to tell us that warnings are always the first step and that, you know, they don't jump right to a ticket right off the bat. That's great for him to tell us, but that doesn't help the resident. You know.
Three seconds.
I just, I'm not sure what to do with this. This is, this is a, we're adding a level of complexity. We're implicating ourselves in enforcement measures that we're not clear on ourselves. It's irresponsible to, I don't understand why we can't just have a two meter prohibited period as the only rule. You know, and then the other ones are coughing into your sleeve and washing your hands. Those are the things that we from public health. Two meters coughing in your sleeve, washing your hands. Those should be the things, the behaviors that are enforceable.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Stroud. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Counselor Chappelle, you've already spoken. Counselor Osterhoff?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Patterson, for that. I really appreciate all the, all the input from everyone. There's, there's lots to, lots for us to say as counselors. And obviously, a lot of the points that I had written down here have already been covered. But I, I appreciate, I do appreciate Counselor Stroud's comments. But we probably have to, the objective is safety here. And I know that, you know, that the extra level of our bylaws are due to create some confusion. Education, I'm hopeful that we're sending that message as council, that education is something that we believe is going to be far more effective. And that I don't, I don't think we want something that's punitive in nature. But that's what I wouldn't want. But, you know, warnings and education. And so I'm hopeful that 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 will accomplish this. To do nothing might might not have a good optic either. So I wanted to ask about the difference from the commissioner, the difference between our police and our bylaw officers. Is there actually a difference in 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 what they can cover in this situation? Like, how do we know who to call? In a sense, is that up to them to divide the calls? Or is and is are they both equally effective and similar interpretations?
Commissioner Fix.
Through you, your worship. So right now, the police are the ones that are handling the calls. And if they require additional assistance, then they're reaching out to our bylaw enforcement officers for that. And as Commissioner Agnew referred to and mentioned, that the they are talking quite a bit. So they're trying to stay on the same page in terms of enforcement and how that's being treated at this point in time. And the provincial direction that provided the police, the powers to enforce the provincial orders, also provided the municipal provincial offenses officers to have that same enforcement power.
Right. Thank you. Agnew? Just Agnew?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson and through you. So again, what Commissioner Joyce has had to offer, our staff are working closely with public health and police. Police are the lead agency at this point in time with support from the city's municipal bylaw officials. This is being reviewed on a daily basis. All of the calls related to COVID related complaints are being tracked through our system and also through Kingston Police's data as well. And we're sharing information with respect to trends and what we're seeing. And again, making sure that there's a consistency and approach across the city with respect to education first. There are a number of calls that are coming in just seeking clarification between our office and Kingston Police. We're both providing answers to those questions when they are coming in, either through our email or phone line, or through Kingston Police. And then we're reciprocally sharing information with one another. And that also is being shared with public health so that we can be coordinating the efforts between the three agencies.
So Osterhoff?
Thank you very much.
Okay, Counsel Hill.
Thank you, your worship. Just, I mean, we've always used a customer service approach, whether it be police or bylaw officers. I mean, that's nothing new. And that's, it's that level, I think, that best provides us with opportunity for education. And I certainly expect them, I've no reason not to believe that staff will continue to use, you know, good judgment. But if you're going to issue directives under an emergency measures, you know, legislation like this, then you, you know, it has to have some teeth at the end of the day. If it doesn't, you know, it'll take about a minute and a half for that to get out over social media. So, you know, this makes perfect sense to me. I think it's the natural progression as we develop, you know, the directions and directives that we want citizens to follow. And I have every reason to believe that our police officers and bylaw officers will, will, you know, will use their good discretion and 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 education will be at the fore of that. So I certainly support this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other hands. So, I'm sorry, you've already spoken. So, so we'll call them out then. All those in favor? Opposed? And that carries by vote of 11 to 2. Okay, moving on to clause number four, capital project status report, fourth quarter 2019. Is there anybody that wishes to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will. We have, Counsel Baum, I think this is the one where you have a, in your interest. So if you want to leave your chair, then we will. Okay, very good. So with that, we will call, Counsel Hodgeson, you wish to speak?
Yes. Thank you. Um, just a question about the to date budget and expenditures, in particularly to do with the transportation in Public Works. The it's significantly at this point in time underspent. And I'm wondering if that will be, is that how that's connected to the COVID emergency and whether there's just some projects we're just not going to be able to do?
So, Counsel Hodgeson, that's, that's a great question. I'm just not sure that that relates to what's in front of us. We're just looking for return of funds into some of our reserve funds.
And the actuals and budget are right in the report.
Okay.
Again.
Who? Yes, Commissioner Kidd.
Through you, Mayor Patterson. Certainly, at the time that this report was written, and the intent of the report is to report on reserve funds. And a number of the projects in transportation and public works are committed projects and projects that were scheduled to go forward. So I don't have a definitive answer for what's going to happen. But and the CEO, I'm sure may want to add to my to my response. But that is something that we'll have to look at. But for this particular report, it's reporting the balances and closing accounts that are small balances and where works have been completed.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I just, I was just looking at how the two main issues, well, two of the main issues for this meeting were sort of dovetailing that. What? Because we're not really into the construction period. So I thought maybe that was part of the explanation. Then we've talked about in some of the updates that the, you know, the provinces stopped construction of certain types. So I just wondered how that was affected. That's all. So I recognize what Ms. Kidd said. We can't really know right now.
Okay, thank you. So with that, then we will call the vote on clause four. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, clause five supplemental report to report number 2020-116, set fines. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that carries by vote of 12 to 1. Clause number six, trap, neuter, vaccinate, return program service agreements. Counsel Santik? Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I want to thank staff very much for getting these reports on to the agenda tonight. We're adding two additional community service providers for the trap neuter program this year compared to last year. And I know that's a lot of work going back and forth with different community groups. So thank you very much for the timing. The timing is really important because spring is the time to try to stay on top of the street cat population. And so thank you very much for doing that for us tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we will call the vote on clause six. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, we have nothing from committee of the whole. We have no information reports. We have no information reports from members of council, miscellaneous business. First, that the following counselors have put their names forth to fill the appointment of deputy mayor for two month increments for the months of June 2020 to November 2020. So I'm going to have the clerk do draw the names, and then I will just read out what the results are. Mr. Clerk? Okay, so for June and July 2020, it is Counsel Osterhoff. For August and September 2020, Counsel Neil. And for October, November 2020, Counsel. Okay, can I have a mover? Oh, yes, that's right. So what, sorry, my apologies. I remember what we normally do is we then wait until our next meeting in case any of those three wish to change their slots. And so we'll do a motion to appoint at our next meeting. Okay, everyone's showing off their pets tonight. It's very impressive, Counsel Baum. Thank you. Okay, next, number two, that is requested by Jamie Omen, Fort Henry National Historic Site Council designate the YGK Craft Beer Fest, taking place on Saturday, June 13, 2020, from 12 to 8 p.m. at Fort Henry National Historic Site as an event of municipal significance, to which special occasions permits may be issued by the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario. Obviously, I think it's fair to say that, you know, this this event may or may not take place, but obviously, they want to get it in place in case it does. Is there a mover and a seconder for the motion? Moved by Counsel Santik, seconded by Counsel Kylie. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried by a vote of 12 to 1. Number three, that is requested by Steve Miguel, Ontario Ret Syndrome Association. Council proclaim October 2020 as Ret Syndrome Awareness Month in Kingston. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Deputy Mayor Neal, seconded by Counsel Doherty. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, so on to new motions, we have one new motion. So moved by Counsel Hill, seconded by Mayor Patterson. The following motion approved by council at its meeting held December 17, 2019 be reconsidered. Whereas the signed 2017 Economic Development Organization Service Level Agreement states under section 2.0 Transparency Reporting and Accountability, 2.2D, EDO will submit a new or updated strategic plan within one year after city council has established its strategic priorities for the term of council. Development of the strategic plan shall include a full program of public consultation prior to the adoption of the plan by EDO and submission to city council. And whereas the deadline for submission of the strategic plan is May 2020, which is no longer feasible, therefore be resolved that in order to ensure KEDCO is in full compliance with the Service Level Agreement, a draft EDO strategic plan be submitted to city council in May of 2020 that includes a clear and timely public consultation plan, and that a final EDO strategic plan through with a thorough record of public consultation be submitted to the city of Kingston, no later than Q3 2020. So just a couple of procedural comments. So this is a motion of reconsideration. So under procedural bylaw, the mover and the seconder have a opportunity to give a brief statement indicating the rationale for the reconsideration, then council will take a vote. If two thirds of council vote in favor, then the motion is reconsidered and is back on the floor. If that does not happen, then the motion fails. So Counsel Hill, again, you have the floor to make a brief statement for your motion reconsideration.
Thank you, your worship. Just wanted to make sure that people understand that this work has been taking place and it has been progressing very well up to this point. So there's been 17 meetings. There's been a lot of data collected, a lot of of analysis has already been developed. The problem has been that we've run into an issue around having effective roundtable discussions, you know, with the stakeholder group. Zoom is working well for us tonight, but it doesn't work well in all of the kinds of situations that we're trying to utilize these conversations that really involve people sort of sitting down in a room. And then, of course, it makes complete sense right now to look at at the role of economic development in terms of of sort of pivoting to support the efforts of our local businesses, much more so than trying to attract new business in the community. That has to be the focus right now to support the our existing businesses. And it just makes sense at this time that the that the resources of the KEDCO are devoted to that task. And ironically, they, you know, recently are about to make an announcement of another company that is coming into into the community. But the they have the resources right now to really assist Keystone Tourism and the Business Improvement Association and the Chamber of Commerce in developing the short term plans to to try to address the issues of local businesses in the community. So that pivot is really critical right now. I think that it makes sense, given that we're not sure how we're going to come out of this, to defer the the five year strategic plan until we have a better sense of that and allow them to do this very important work locally.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor, would you take the chair just so that I can make a brief statement?
I do. I do. And I recognize you.
Great. Thank you very much. I think my only comment is that the motion that that Counsel Hill and myself are asking council to reconsider is asking KEDCO to come and present, for example, in May on the first draft of of the five year strategic plan that would align with our council strategic plan. And I think my point is that we have an alternative motion in mind that we would much rather that KEDCO come to speak to council about what they are doing to address the COVID-19 situation, how they are helping small and medium sized businesses, how they are helping to to lay the groundwork for an economic recovery plan that will be critical. I think, as has been said, the landscape has radically changed. And I think that we need to be able to respond with that. So with that, certainly would ask for support with the motion reconsideration. Thank you.
Great. And I return the chair.
Great. Thank you very much. So at this point, then we will call the vote on the motion to reconsider. And then, so so Counsel Chappelle, so to be clear, a motion to reconsider is not debatable. It's only, there's a mover and secondary that can make the brief statement, and then it's the vote. If the motion to reconsideration passes, then we move to full debate and discussion from there. Okay, so we'll call the vote on the motion to reconsider. All those in favor? So can you just keep your hands up? Okay, so that carries by a vote of 11 to 2. Okay, so now, the motion that we originally passed on December 17, Okay, so now the motion that we originally passed on December seventeenth, twenty nineteen is now back on the floor. So at this point, it is open for debate and discussion. I'm sorry. Yes. Deputy Mayor Neil.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to defer to councillor Hill and Mayor Patterson, who have assured me because I had some reservations about this because indeed this is over a year from when or almost a year from when this was supposed to have been done. And so it's frustrating. I appreciate that we're living in difficult, very difficult times and that their staff have been let our staff for the most part been working from home. So and the wording is such of the motion that at least it recognizes a commitment that this is indeed going to be done. It's well, I mean, it's very much overdue. But I will support the motion with some trepidation, I'm afraid, but I will support it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next on my list is councillor Chappelle.
Thank you, your worship. It's interesting how this KEDCO file seat keeps coming back. It's kind of like a bad rash that never goes away. My concern is that we have, I have expressed concerns. I've had constituents express concerns. I'd like to know how much we spent on a consultant and why the consultant cannot deliver on their deliverables and if we're going to repay on our 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 costs, because I imagine they're exorbitant. The other aspect that I see is quite frustrating is that we are going to have to do a very significant deep dive into looking we 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 offer to the resident of the city of Kingston, because we are going to have such an economic impact with a lot of tourism, a lot of tax dollars, probably twenty percent of our businesses will not reopen. There's we're going to have a significant impact and perhaps it's also a time to discuss whether we bring KEDCO back inside and have city staff run this opportunity. Rather, and that way they could pivot much more rapidly. We won't be in a debate of trying to align a city plan with our economic development and and because it'll already be aligned with the city. So I will not be supporting this.
Okay, thank you councillor Chappelle. I'm just going to interject just for a procedural clarification. So right now, what we have in front of us is the motion that was passed on December the seventeenth, asking for the strategic draft, the strategic plan to be presented to us in May with the final strategic plan presented no later than Q three twenty twenty. So I just want everyone to be clear when we come to the vote, what it is that we're voting on. So as as you know, there is an alternative motion. So in order for that alternative motion to go forward, this motion would need to be voted down. Now, you can vote in favor of this motion, or you can vote against it for whatever rationale that you want. I just want to make sure everybody's clear about exactly what that process looks like. Is everyone clear on process at this point? I'm not trying to limit debate or discussion. I just want to make sure everyone understands where we're at. Okay, next on my oh, yes, councillor, do you have a point of word?
Just to clarify what you said. So the the procedure is this, the original motion gets from December gets voted on right now and debated on right now. And and then we have another round of debate for the new motion. Is that correct?
Yes. So so what will happen is that we will have a vote on the a revote on the original motion that was passed December the seventeenth. If that loses, then there is an opportunity for an alternative motion to be presented and then voted on. In terms of discussion, to be to be frank and to be fair, I think it's fair to say that you can you can speak to either to be to be fair. So you can either speak, you can either speak to the original motion that's in front of us. And then if that loses and there's another alternative motion, you can speak to that one as well. So I just want to make sure everyone's clear on.
Okay, so councillor Chappelle was was what he what he said he was against, what he means is against reopening the issue, which means he's in favor of the original motion.
Right. So so and and that's fair. Again, I just want to make sure everyone's clear clear on that. But yes, that's right.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Okay, so seeing that, then I will call the vote on the original motion from December the seventeenth. Again, just one more time to be clear. If you want to stick with the original direction to KEDCO, you will vote yes. If you want to look at an alternative direction with alternative motion, then you would vote no. Okay, so we will call the vote then. All those in favor? So three opposed. Okay, and that that loses. Okay, so now that motion has been defeated. So now we will entertain the alternative motion. Moved by councillor Hill, seconded by myself. Can we get that motion up on the screen so everyone can see it? Okay, so this is the this is the new motion. And councillor Hill, as the mover, you have the floor if you wish.
Just
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, councillor. What I'll do is just for everybody that can't see it, I'll just read it out and then I'll give you the floor if that's okay. So moved by councillor Hill, seconded by Mayor Patterson. Whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic and the resulting restrictions with respect to public gatherings have had an impact on stakeholder consultation in the Kingston Economic Development Corporation's immediate requirement to address business response and recovery plans may hinder the ability to meet prior agreed to timelines with a quality product. Therefore be resolved that Kingston Economic Development Corporation be directed to provide city council with a number one COVID nineteen business response recovery plan by May fifth, twenty twenty. Number two, update on COVID nineteen business response recovery plan implementation in September twenty twenty. Number three, draft integrated economic development strategic plan, which includes a clear and timely timely stakeholder consultation plan by October twenty twenty. And final strategic plan with the record of stakeholder consultation by the end of Q four twenty twenty. Councillor Hill, you have the floor.
You know, obviously, we're we're looking at a very different circumstance than what we initially anticipated when we requested this. The it doesn't by any means suggest that this five year strategic plan is not going to be developed. It is going to be developed. What it does do is it gives us an opportunity for us to redirect those resources and have them working with Tourism Kingston, with the BIA, with the Chamber of Commerce to develop a recovery plan, which is really going to be very critical in the short term. Perhaps the long term, as councillor McLaren has indicated already. So that we are, we have something that's ready. I think our local business community, almost without question, is looking for that kind of support from the community. And and they've seen support coming to them from a variety of different levels of government. So I think it's only it's only appropriate. I think the other thing that we have to consider too is what the five year plan will look like. It's going to have to be a lot more nimble. I suspect at some point we may even, you know, consider further how we are going to link that to what may be ultimately strategic plan for the city that looks a little bit different than the one we currently have, because I suspect there may be some changes coming relative to whatever the final outcomes are of this crisis. The work has, this is not an excuse for KEDCO to avoid work. The work is well underway. It's a pause, an interruption, I guess, if you will. I I think it makes makes a ton of sense, because right now they have resources that will assist them, the the consulting group that they have that is actually on budget and in fact on your budget at this point. We'll be able to provide them with with additional support. I just think it makes a lot of sense on on so many levels. Really believe that it's important right now to to ensure that, you know, we make every effort and we're seen to make every effort to support our local businesses. This is a fundamental rule of KEDCO, as you know, that along with attracting new business. And but right now, this is clearly the priority. And I think that, you know, your support in this regard will do two things. It'll allow the partners to continue to work together to develop the short term plan. But it also keeps in place the requirement for KEDCO to develop the five year strategic plan that links to what we're trying to do here at the city. So I do hope we will support this.
Thank you. And next, this is councillor Doherty.
Thank you. And through you, considering all the changes that are going on, we really have to be, give KEDCO the opportunity to be flexible. I think it it's a waste of taxpayers' money if if we set them up to fail. And they need, it just makes sense that they need time to to reevaluate things. And we really, the same as the tourist Kingston conversation earlier, we really have to do everything to support our local businesses. And we we are able to be flexible because that's the time that we're in. So I'll definitely support this. Thanks.
You, Deputy Mayor Neil.
Excuse me. Yes, thank you. I will be voting for this. I am I have to repeat a certain level of frustration that I've had with this process. This under normal circumstances is done five or six months after and presented to a new council. This will be presented halfway through our term. And if it's a five year plan, it won't come back to the next council until their final year or near their final year. So so that's in my mind defeats the whole purpose of presenting a strategic plan to a new council. And I appreciate, as I mentioned before, that we're in a very difficult time. Their staff are working from home. Our staff are working from home. All of that impacts on this. But I have to repeat that if they had followed the terms of their agreement initially, this would have been completed well before we were faced with with the crisis pandemic that we have now. So I hate to sound like a scold, but I am scolding. And hopefully then they'll come back to the new council in a timely fashion so that the the new council can make a recommitment to them. A five year strategic plan not agreed to until the end of this this year means they they've come in halfway through our term. So but we can't make arguments for the future council. I just hope that they are vigilant. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, this is councillor Holland.
Your worship, I guess, just for the record, first of all, I did, I voted the wrong way initially. I have trouble with opposites. And so I did want to see this go forward for reconsideration. And and I'm happy to support the new motion. I I did just also want to share some of the concerns that councillor Neil has indicated regarding the timing, but I think but I but I do have confidence that we will we'll see what we what we've been asking for for a period of time. And, you know, given the circumstances, it's important to be reasonable with those timelines. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ostroff.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. As I also sit on the active and proudly sits there, I I do hope that we will all support this. And you know, it's not a bad rash. It's 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 like smooth seas. It's not smooth seas. It's a it's rough seas and ships have to assess the weather and the storm and make the right changes for the well being of everyone. In this case, economic development is a it's it's a moving target with the COVID nineteen challenge we have. And there's tremendous people working very, very hard and with many successes. And this is just going to, this is just showing that we, as a councillor, we are doing the responsible thing. This should give our business community you know, a pause of of confidence, a vote of competence in that we are at the helm and that we are involved with this and we are supportive. And so you know, we just must do everything. We need to have flexibility. We need to understand what's happening out there. And I I know with the board of directors, there's everybody's involved and everybody's doing their job. And I just think it's the right thing to be doing right now. And I appreciate this motion and the attentiveness that it calls for and that we could get this done and continue the good work that's being done. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Chappelle.
Thank you, Mayor. I am absolutely delighted to hear my colleagues who serve on the KEDCO board speak about the importance of supporting small business and local business. That is what I have been championing for more than a decade, working with rural economic development. So with that lens, I think it's important that that KEDCO does double down and focus on how it can help the community and the small businesses that are certainly going to be suffering through this horrendous period of our time. I actually do have similar concerns to what was expressed by my colleague, Mr. Neil. And it is it is concerning that this has taken so long to address, but it is what it is. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak about the supporting of small local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bull.
Your worship and through you. Yeah, having sat on some of the preliminary strategic planning sessions for this, just to echo some of councillor Hill's comments earlier, it would be almost impossible to come up with with a good strategic plan under the current situation. I also feel that everybody's focus is is obviously on this right now. Therefore, it's very hard to know how to forecast and how to make a plan, because we don't really know how things are going to look after this, even I I do share some frustrations that there it's not done yet in a sense. But even if it was done now, at this point, we'd probably be looking at opening up again, because we're looking at a totally different world. So there are some some maybe positives to be taken out of this and that if we can work through this and and sort of plan for what the new world's going to be. Part of that, in my mind, I completely agree with councillor Chappelle on this, is is supporting our small businesses. What we're experiencing right now is something where medium sized to large businesses typically have the ability to weather storms like this much better than small businesses. So the vast majority of the support that's going to be needed in the community is really going to be for small businesses, that the ones that donate to your, you know, your sports teams, the ones that we're always relying on to provide jobs for our children in our teens and all that. They're the ones right now that are going to be struggling the most. And and unfortunately, some of them might not make it through this and some of them won't make it through this. So this is where we really have to kind of do that circle wholesome look at how we provide supports going forward for those businesses, which today's small businesses are usually tomorrow's medium businesses and and some future large businesses. Just to kind of piggyback on what councillor Chappelle said, we really do need to to find that focus and and look and and modify the strategic to exist in the new world, but at the same time to really put that focus on meeting Kingston small business and how we can help grow them and support them as possible in the new world. So I'll be supporting this and I'm also eager to continue with strategic planning once that's able to be.
Okay, thank you, councillor Hudson.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The way I see this new motion is it's two fundamental aspects to it. And that is the business response or recovery plan is just necessary and crucial to the welfare of our city. Very dearly do a small business, be sure, but the not just small business, but all the employees and all the economic economic spin off aspects of that as well. So I'm fully in support of that because we have to adjust. And this is part of the adjustment to the COVID crisis. The secondary part of it, or not such secondary, but the second part has to do with the Economic Development Strategic Plan, which there's been some expression of some levels of frustration, which I can understand and for for my although I think that perhaps someone else can express this, I think the next strategic plan addresses two thousand twenty one and on. So I'm not sure if we, just how far behind we actually are. But the one thing I'm looking forward to is the integration of metrics or measurements of of what constitutes success at the Economic Development Corporation. To me, this is crucial, hasn't been in the past there in truly appreciable way. And so this has led to big trouble and much public criticism in the past because we didn't have a service level agreement that indicated what would constitute success on the part of what was then Kedco, now the Economic Development Corporation. And so I'm looking forward to seeing that. And maybe it'll be in the draft in May or May, but certainly it needs to be there in the final plan in the Q four. So with hope and the idea that this is unavoidable, we have to adjust and we need a better probably plan than we're capable of producing now, I will vote for this.
Hey, thank you, Council Kylie.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, through you. To yourself or Counselor Hill, in the motion, it talks about the Business Recovery Plan coming in the next month. I'm wondering if any of the work that's done through that part of Kedco's endeavors now will inform the strategic plan that will come later.
Council Hill?
Thank you. I would hope so. I mean, I think that that's a pretty, you know, obviously, it's early days, right? And so we're waiting, you know, to see how long this is going to take. We're waiting to see, you know, how significant the impact is going to be. We're not going to know that until we start to collect some of that data. So so whatever comes will be like what came out of Tourism Kingston. I don't know if you had a chance to see the video that they produced, but you know, it'll be preliminary effort, but it will, it will, I think, provide us with the direction that we want to go in. And I certainly think it should and would inform what the ultimate strategic plan would look like.
Okay, good to hear. I figured as much, but I thought it was important to ask. And my second question is about timelines. And the unknown that we've discussed about every motion tonight or every agenda item is if COVID continues to wreak havoc for the year, I presume we're comfortable to push back the ultimate strategic plan again, recognizing that there's probably an interim plan for COVID. I'm just wanting to say that I think that this could continue to be pushed back. And that is okay, given the circumstance. So is that the understanding of the Board of Kedco as well?
Yes, I absolutely. I mean, you know, that's kind of the unstated assumption, right, that that we're going to know everything that we're doing right now is with the hope that this will end relatively soon. But with the anticipation that it may not and very likely will not. So lots of things could change. I suspect, you know, we talked about this a little bit earlier, that even our five year strategic plan as a city could, you know, have to undertake some reviews around that. All of that would link back to the strategic plan for Kedco, but also for plans that, you know, of a whole bunch of groups that are associated with the operations of the City of Kingston. So, you know, it's the 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 answer is yes, you know, if if at some point it appears that we're not even close to being emerging from this, that we need to take another look at that because that's impacting on what the final product might look like, then we would come back and probably make this request. I think we won't be alone in that regard.
Fair enough. Yeah, thank you. I like how one can inform the other and how both processes include consulting with small businesses. So I'll definitely be supporting this motion. Thanks for answering my question.
Thank you, Council Stroud.
Thank you, worship. Yeah, actually, what Counselor Hill just said was kind of what I wanted to mention is the reason, the rationale for this motion here, unprecedented changes needing active to reset and and push back the strategic plan work and so on. It is a little bit concerning. Let's let's not sugarcoat it. Here we are in the second year of our term. And this is even and this and this work isn't done. I mean, we did this work in the first quarter of our first term, right? We did this in the first quarter of year one, our strategic plan. And we did it, it was, we remember it wasn't easy. It was a lot of work, but we did it in a short timeline. I mentioned there was consultant involved. We got a report or they got a report and it didn't result in an institution kind of time. Like, you got to wonder if there's something structural involved that's preventing this kind of important work from being done in reasonable timelines, COVID or no COVID. And right now, we've got an emergency fine. But why? Why is it even still not done? What? Is it not started? Is that what they need till the end of the year? Let me ask the members that sit on the board, and I know we'll get different answers, but this is, these kind of delays are endemic to this agency and it's not acceptable. And we can't keep giving them more time, you know? We just passed a motion to set bylaws and fines for migrant factions based on speculative information about distancing and so on. And and we're going to give a large agency with crucial stakeholders waiting for this work, we're going to give them more time, you know? It just, it seems very strange. It seems very strange that that we're even asking for this, that this question is even on the table. This should have been done long ago. Each questions about this agency date back to the beginning of my first term, which is almost six years ago. The questions in their current form about whether they can deliver. And this is a simple strategic plan. This isn't whether they could, as Council Hutchison mentioned, actually have deliverables that we can measure and know whether the money is going somewhere and giving us what we want. I mean, we all agree, we want the support that we're requesting. Are we getting it? I don't think there's any evidence of that. And there's no there's no way of knowing if we're going to get closer to that until we have plans in place that can be evaluated. So of course, at this point in time, the situation as framed, it's the right thing to do. But we're we're a pretty soft organizational, you know, head of an organization if we're just going to continually allow an agency to perform like this. Some sometime, at some point, we're going to have to say the buck stops here. Okay? It's like, I know you guys are all very optimistic. The fallout of this crisis is going to be heavy, heavy. And then there's a lot of money going into this agency and we may not have much to show for it. So, in our own strategic plan, as I started out saying, our own strategic plan is set, but it was set on different set of different set of circumstances. I hope this doesn't lead into us reopening our own strategic plan and say, oh, and then we're going to get recommendations from staff about things, projects that we've started that we can't complete because of the problem, you know? It's like one thing leads to another. So start thinking about the domino effect that this kind of thing will entail. Also, why is it we're talking about, you know, helping out certain aspects of our economy and not harvest by the pandemic itself? Why aren't we not talking a little bit more about helping the people of the world? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair? Deputy Mayor Neil, would you, can you take the chair?
Yes, I will. And I recognize you.
Thank you. So I think as as we've already heard, I think Counselor Hill has mentioned this and Counselor Bum as well, that there's already a lot of work that's been done in the strategic plan. And quite frankly, you know what? We could have Kedco come as we'd requested and they could come and they could present a strategic plan, a draft of that plan to us in May. And then they could continue to work on it and present it by Q three two thousand twenty. It's very clear to me, having spoken with both the board and staff, that that's absolutely doable. But why? Why would we have them do that when the landscape has changed so radically? I know that I've spoken with Kedco staff and they are on the phone constantly, all day, every day, reaching out, speaking with small businesses that are struggling, that don't know what to do, that need that support. And I, for one, don't want to go to them and say, sorry, you need to you need to stop doing that and complete the work on the strategic plan for for something that is no longer speaking to the atmosphere and the surroundings that we're dealing with. I actually believe that every single community organization is going to have to be revisiting its strategic plan. I think that we as council are going to have to look at our strategic plan. I think it would be crazy not to. To be honest, I think that our term of council has has shifted. I think that we're going to be having to look at the recovery, first getting through the crisis, but then getting through that recovery. And that's going to be a long road ahead of us. We're all going to have to work together on that. There's going to be lots of tough choices and decisions and how how we're going to manage that. And nobody knows exactly how this is going to play out. To be clear, every organization is in exactly the same situation as Kedco. The only reason why we're talking about Kedco is it's the one organization where we had passed a motion asking them to report back with certain pieces in May and September. So really, let's face it, we're all, we're all reacting. We're all trying to adapt. We're all trying to understand what is that, what does that look like? But I think that the number one piece right now, where we are, is I think that this is about sending a clear message to to our small and medium sized local businesses that that right now, the priority is, how do we, how do we cope? How how do we help support those businesses through that? And then set people up for success in an economic recovery plan. And so that is really the the ultimate goal and the spirit behind this. So so I think that ultimately, we can, we can move forward. And to be clear, we are ultimately giving an opportunity for all of us to be able to to work together. And clearly, I look forward to to hearing from from Kedco in a couple of our meetings about exactly what what's going on and what the strategies and and supports are in place that are going to help our small businesses get through this time. Thank you. Deputy, if I could have the chair back, that would be great.
You can.
Thank you. So anybody else that wishes to speak that has not already spoken? Council Chappelle, I'm sorry, I think you've already already spoken. The only one that can speak twice is the movers. So Counselor Hill, you can have the last word if there's nobody else on the list.
Well, thank you. Just to Counselor Stroud's comments, because I absolutely hear what he's saying. And I would say I can't speak for Counselor Bum, Counselor Ostrath, but I can share my opinion. We're we're three city councillors who sit on the on the Kedco Board. We're not three Kedco Board members who sit on City Council. We hear what the concerns are that are coming from council. And we're sharing those with the folks at Kedco and with the committee that's doing this review. And I just want to really, I guess, reassure everyone that that the the concerns that have been expressed around the table are being reflected back at the table as well. So I hope that gives you some consolation in the short term. I think this is the right way to go in the short term because I really do think, like so many people in the community, our small businesses, our businesses in general, actually, are looking to us for the kind of support that this is, and it's up. So I really very pleased to see the support around the table for this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Chappelle, I am seeing a point of order from you asking to have the motion split, which we can do. I just am asking what what you would like split. So there are four pieces in the resolve clause. Would you like each of the four separated? Or is there is there a clear separation where we can do two votes?
I'll be able to see the motion up. I can't recall.
Yeah, for sure. So if we'll just put the motion back up on the screen.
Seeing the way it's written, I'm not really sure how to split it to make more effective. I just basically wanted to indicate that I was in support of small business and I appreciate the business recovery at this point. So I don't know how I can incorporate that to split it. If it was on paper, I would have been able to see it. But I apologize for taking the time for this point of more.
Thank you. Okay, so if there's no, if there's no separate of the motion, then we will just call the vote on the motion as a whole. All those in favor? Opposed? And that carries by a vote of eleven to two. Okay, we have no other new motions. Are there any notices of motion? Okay, Mr. Clerk Ross for minutes, please.
Moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor Osterhoff, that the minutes of City Council Meeting Number two thousand twenty dash eleven held Tuesday, March twenty fourth, two thousand twenty, and the special City Council Meeting Number two thousand twenty dash twelve held Tuesday, March twenty fourth, two thousand twenty be confirmed.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. We have some tabling of documents. We have a number of communications. Other business. So I have an item of other business. And certainly, I think I speak for for everyone on on City Council about how much we appreciate the tremendous work that is going on in our community with our frontline workers, whether it's our frontline healthcare workers that are going to work each day, putting themselves and their families at risk and taking care of of those that that need that care. There's so many other frontline workers, whether it's our transit drivers, the grocery store clerks, there's so many that are out there, again, putting their, putting themselves at risk to help keep our city running and be able to support the rest of us. And so so we have a message on behalf of Kingston City Council that we would just like to send now to all of our frontline workers. And so at this point, if anyone's watching, so we want to say thank you. Thank you to each and every one of you for all the great work that you're doing. Awesome. Fantastic. And thanks to you, Counsel Stroud, one of our frontline healthcare workers. We appreciate it. Awesome. Thanks very much, guys. All right, amazing. So with that, Mr. Clerk Ross for bylaws, please.
Moved by Counselor Doherty, seconded by Counselor Holland, that bylaws one through three, five, six, and four be given their first and second reading.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried.
Counselor Doherty, seconded by Counselor Dougherty, seconded by Counselor Holland, that clause 11.36 of bylaw number 2010-1, as amended, be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaws one, two, five, and six three readings.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried.
Moved by Counselor Dougherty, seconded by Counselor Holland, that bylaws one through three, five, six, and four be given their third reading.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Motion adjourned, please. Moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Hutchinson. All those in favor? Opposed? And that carries. Thanks very much, everybody. Have a great night.